I'd like to introduce Mr. Anthony Amato. His background is in strategic planning, business development, and operations management company. He has a BA, Bachelor of Science in Aerospace and Mechanical Engineering, and an MBA in Finance and Operations from Columbia. Anthony has volunteered innumerable hours of time to help us with this financial presentation, as have many or all of the members of the Long Range Planning Committee, so I wanted to thank them all again. Anthony's going to present, and I don't want to take his fire to introduce himself, but my understanding he's going to make a presentation of the economic evaluations of all of the options. What I would like to do is hold questions from the board until he's finished. However, I believe there may be certain points during the presentation that Anthony may feel, and it's certainly up to him that he'll take questions throughout, so, Mr. Amato.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the introduction. I think, I know most everyone here now having worked this process for a few months.
Anthony, I'm sorry, I was just asking you to...
Speak up a little bit?
Big audience.
All right. So, as Jim said, as I was going through, as part of the Long Range Planning Committee, initially on Michelle's team, working through the process and then seeing how the numbers were starting to just, sort of just come at people, I volunteered to step in and say, I think I can help aggregate the financial information as it's coming in, in a way that everybody can help make sense of it across all of the options. And, you know, the first lesson when I was in the military is never volunteer, and I didn't get that too well. But I really did think that my experience would lend itself to the process, so this is a culmination of a lot of work, of a lot of people in this room, and it really does speak to the real, the source of the data is really what this is all about. So, I'm just an aggregator. So with that, I'm going to start going through this, and we'll see how we progress. So, to recap, this is Goal 3 of the Long Range Planning Committee. Again, the, this is a portion that's going to address the economic evaluation of the facilities and the wide of the downward demographics set up. Okay. That has come back to work. So, the first place we'll start is through a recap of the process, the decision-making process that's in front of the board, and ultimately the towns. And we looked at the, there are several options reading across the top. You will see that they should look somewhat familiar, but to go over them, moving left to right, we have the current configuration, which was previously referred to, or also known as the status quo, but I think we've all seen that some discussion that the current configuration is probably a better description of what that option is. And that is basically repair of the existing facilities. Option two was to renovate the core with two new wings onto this building. Option three was a new PK to five, and then repairing the middle school, high school. Option, pardon somebody's way, I could try to step back, but, option two C, rather, is the new PK to 12. Option three was PK to 12, excuse me, renovate the core with the wings, except leave burning as it is. Option four was to tuition out the middle school and the high school. Option five was not looked at, whatever option five was. Option six was a reconfiguration of the two primary schools, that's the K to two, three to five, and Washington on its own, as well as the repairs of the middle school, high school. And number seven was the theme schools. So, if you look at this matrix, the first row is what you heard, I believe, last week at the board meeting. So I layered in the cumulative scores that came out of each of the planning committees as a reminder and a way to eventually bring these two pieces of work together. And this is going to focus on the green lane, which is the economics of that, of those options. I'm not going to get into the qualitative aspect of this, just strictly a quantitative exercise. And number seven was not looked at, at least not economically. I know that the planning committee looked at it, but I was not asked to do anything economically around that option. And the last note that I'll draw is with a reference to the thick line at the bottom of this matrix, the repurposing of the elementary schools. We know that that's part of the ultimate decision-making process that the towns have to go through. But in prior meetings with the three towns, we agreed to draw the line right there and say that everything above the line is what the Board of Education would be factoring in, everything below the line is would be left up to the individual towns to factor in to their thinking as this process goes forward. So, anything that has to do with repurposing the buildings is not captured in these numbers. I thought I'd start with just a baseline and understanding that the region 12, 2012-13 budget is on baseline, that's what everything is being built off of, and this is just a snapshot of what that baseline looks like. I should have put a total budget on here, but it's, where's Gary, because he's got that number tattooed, but it's 21 million, 255,000, give or take. But this is what, this is how it breaks down. Seventy-two percent of the budget is spent on salaries and budgets, about six percent, five and a half percent is spent on operations and maintenance. And that does not include, the operations and maintenance piece does not include the $100,000 reserve for the primary school repairs, that is outside normal loss of 5.4 percent. So it's these two categories which most, which the cost savings that are reflecting in this model are going to come from. We didn't look at really anything else that's outside of those two major categories, because at that point you're getting, you're really getting into the noise, and it's not going to, it's not going to fundamentally drive the analysis. We also looked at the operations and maintenance costs per square foot. We looked at each of the individual facilities, and you can see the cost per square foot is at district level is $4.29 a square foot, and you can see how it breaks down by an individual building. And you can see the split on square foot costs, actually square footage, and the cost per square foot. Again, the $100,000 is not included in that number. So I thought we'd spend a little bit of time just talking about the cost per student, since this seems to be a metric, an important data point, one that's relevant to other districts, and has gotten a lot of discussion. What I did here was, if you look at the red line, this is your current 10-year projection, which is resource number two. You can see, we started right now, it's 794, and we actually head down to 528. This blue line down here is your cost per student. Now this is district-wide, so it's not just the high school, but it's an average for all students. And right now we're at almost 27,000 per head, where we are today. So you can follow these demographics, and you can see that if this holds true, you're cruising to a point of about $50,000 ahead to educate a child in 2012. Now, this is a point of departure where you'll have to fill in this, in your own mind's eye, into where you think demographics might go beyond those 10 years. Because what we're looking at here is certainly bigger than a 10-year horizon. We're looking at something that's closer to 30-year horizon, and we look at the bonding schedules that are going to be associated with any one of these options. So a way to read this is, this, the short dashed line is if the current demographics continue to decline at the rate that they're averaging over the first 10 years. So that would be this curve. The corresponding cost per student would be this blue line with the, with the short dashes. So, if you, if you look at, pick a point out in the future, 25 years from now, if the demographics happen to be a little over 200, you're looking at about, you know, close to 200,000 ahead. Now, the only happy path, if you will, would be what happens in 10 years, we hit a point of inflection, and we start coming back up at the same rate that we've been declining, it forms this curve, and the corresponding cost per student follows this curve. So even if you're coming back and increasing, structurally, you have some restrictions with just the way the region is physically laid out, that is causing you to basically maintain slightly below 50,000 ahead, if you're coming back at this rate. So you look at this, and I've had discussions with a few people along the way here, with different, everybody else has got a different opinion as to where that curve might go. Very simply, just take this curve, you know, you draw your line in your mind's eye, someplace in between there, and you can see that your cost per student will fall someplace in there. So it gives you a directional feel for some, what I think is a very important macro data point, as to what's going to happen long-term with the district. Which there seems to be, again, a lot, and I think it's the right area to focus on, is it's a hard business to predict what this curve is going to look like, but unfortunately, that is not an option, because again, you're looking, this is, this is a long-term decision. Are there any questions on this chart?
It includes inflation, the rate of inflation?
It includes inflation, so this is one of the reasons why you're bending this curve up, is that the average inflation that everything is based on is factored in here, and that's the three and quarter percent.
Could you speak up? So everybody can hear, please?
Did you hear the last question? I'll repeat it.
Didn't hear the question or the answer?
The question was, is inflation included? And the answer is yes, it is.
And what was it?
Would you speak to that? You had a discussion with the, to my understanding, with the three board of finance chairs?
Yeah, we did.
Was there agreement on that number?
There was an agreement that, that we would use inflated dollars, because I think the convention of the districts are to speak in future terms in inflated dollars. So I decided to continue using inflated dollars in all of our analysis.
And the rate is what, 3?
3.26 percent is what it averaged out.
And that's what everyone agreed to?
And that's what everybody agreed to.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, I'll repeat, something I'd said earlier is the way we've looked at the economics is in two aspects. One is from a financial planning standpoint, and the other one is from a capital planning standpoint. Usually, you run through those two analyses, and then you've got your two data points, or if you will, that should give you a holistic view of your economics to then go forward. Most important thing is, you're looking at very long horizons, the bonds or anywhere, most of the bonds that are reflected in here are 25-year life bonds, I think there's only one scenario that has a 20-year bond. But you want to have the same criteria, same treatment for everything. So no matter what was done here, no matter how, the staffing plans, everything that feeds this, was all done with the same, through the same lenses. So any assumptions that were made for one option are consistent through any of the other options when it relates to staffing, square footage, et cetera. And of course, ultimately, one source for all the data. So there's only one cost per square footage that was provided by Don, and that fed everything, as an example. I'm not going to drain this slide by trying to read it all, I will invite you to read it, but I will highlight a couple of things. The first one is that we've had several reviews with the three town financial managers, going through the spreadsheets, the source information going from the bottom all the way as it fed through what you'd see in the next slide, is the methodology. We, as Jim said, we looked at things like inflation rate, we all agreed on what inflation that we were going to use, where it came from, everybody was satisfied with that. We also looked, you know, asked questions about the bonding assumptions. So everything that you see in here has been essentially agreed to in principle by the three towns on how the numbers were treated. I think everybody's familiar with the data sources for the various information. Again, we used 2012 as your baseline budget, everything is inflated, the bonding schedules were all submitted to us by Webster, Webster Bank. We did make one change, the occupancy, the SLAM proposals and the K&amp;B proposals were all estimating occupancy. If everything goes perfectly well, September of 2016, that was pushed out to a full year. And, and part of that was following the correct guidelines for capital budgeting. And I think understanding more about this process now than I did when I first got here, I think that was a wise decision, and also lends conservatism towards the analysis. In the PK to 12, it includes the pool, the larger auditorium, but does not include the central offices. The tuitioning out, again, included the middle school, I think this was discussed already with the board last week, but it's important to note that we did not evaluate tuitioning out just the high school at this time. You know, maybe it's subject for further debate, it may be an iteration that needs to come, but based on the information we had available to us and in the timeframe, it was not, it was not looked at. And, that's about it. Does anybody have any questions on this slide?
Let me note that, for accreditation, you are including the expectation that the labs will need to be improved.
Yes.
But there are other things under community resources in our accreditation process, such as light, air quality, a number of other things for this building that will need to also be improved, I mean, a substantial number of items. And you're only including the labs in this?
No, the point here was, the K&amp;B estimate for repairs on this building, and whether or not they get to everything that's on the list that you said required for accreditation, I'll let Don, or maybe Tony, or somebody else who's more fluent with that study, make that connection. But we do know that the K&amp;B study did not include the labs. So we did add incremental funding to the K&amp;B study to get the labs to the point where they would pass accreditation.
But you're not sure about the other items on the community resources list?
No, I'd ask Tony, maybe if you...
We can review that, and I can get to that information. Don, do you just want to speak quickly about what's on the repair list? They're dealing with the lighting and the air from K&amp;B, the 20 million?
A lot of it is dealing with the ADA requirements in the building. Tony tried to go with changes in the science lab, only puts one ADA required by the science room, but doesn't require any of the, the, the cost. It does, it's just a, a lot of use up on the road with the, our 25 to 30 years old right now. It does also include the roof job, includes window replacements, door replacements, carpet and paint, tiles, a lot of these places tiled and removed in place.
That's good. My question was specifically about the items required under community resources for accreditation, which are beyond those items.
It's not renovating this new...
I'll ask standards for accreditation.
We're going to have to review the standards, because I know that they have facility standards, but community resources speaks to a lot, does the community support the...
No, it speaks to the facilities and the, and the light, air, the labs, the quality of support the community gives to the facility. So if those items that we need to have pass accreditation are in our repair line item, then that might be a low ball.
So methodology, and this is where I certainly want to spend enough time where this is appreciated, because it's really key to where the upcoming numbers are coming from. So without dragging you through the spreadsheet and confusing you, which is easy to do, because I get myself confused trying to manipulate different numbers together, we have, when you start here, it kind of works my way through. So one of the primary sources is resource two, which was Dr. Prouder's student population trends. That then was feeding the demographics by grade, which was then fed into resource 10, which then developed the elementary staffing based on those numbers. Then you take from resource 11, which was the cost per FTE. Those two are the primary feeds into resource 15, which then develop a staffing plan based on a physical configuration. Off to this side, resource 14 is the operations and maintenance piece, which also fed then into the capital plan. And out of, and out of resource 15, you can see, this is the information that we pulled out of it, the cost per configuration to staff it. On the right side are all of the capital improvement projects. So you start with the SLAM estimates, K&amp;B repair needs, the K&amp;B renovation needs, the site improvements, tempered with the correct planning guidelines. So all this information then flowed through, and that's what we used to develop our capital requirements for each one of these options. Those capital requirements then fed the capital plan. So we've got convergence of this data here, the staffing plans, and the cost per square foot come into the capital plan. So the capital plan then becomes a cash flow, expenditures versus saves. And you just put that in whatever year those were occurring, and you do a net, either it's a plus number, or it's a negative number in any given year over, over the period of time. So that's what's feeding that bit of information. Out of that comes a schedule for capital expenditures, since what do I need, what money am I going to have to have available to fund these options, as working capital, if you will? And that's what we said to Webster, and said, this is what I need, this is what I need, this is when I need it, and how would you bond it, within, within the law, but how would you bond it? That information then comes back to us in the form of bonding schedules, which gives us our interest, our principal, bonding costs, et cetera, and then feeds the next piece, which is the financial plan. And this is really your net expenses or your budgeting. So this is what you pay year in and year out, and how you finance your capital plan. And resource three was your base budget, which gives you, this is, again, this is my point of reference. I'm going to add to it the incremental funding by floating the bond, and I'm going to take from it the cost savings that I'm going to get from making this investment, whether it's in the form of staffing, or whether it's in the form of operations and maintenance And then out of those two exercises, out of the capital plan calls your economic, your basic economic analysis, or return on investment, or basically a qualitative position on which one of those assets represents the best prudent spend expense or expenditure of money, based on the projects. The other one is the financial plan, and from that comes your projected budgets over the next 30 years. So, probably a lot to absorb, you might want to keep this page open. But are there any questions for the board on this? Where everything came from?
That was easy. I explained it well.
So let's get into an example of the capital plan. I just took a snapshot, just to give people a feeling of what's behind everything that's to come, which follows the methodology that we just presented. So again, look, look at that methodology and kind of follow along, and you'll see it come to life here. We have the project year across the top, I just happened to pick option two A, which is the renovation of this building with the two wings. And you look at fiscal year, or project year one, which is fiscal year 13, 14, and you see there's no capital required in that year, because, again, per crack, we're going to be spending the next year getting everything in line, including lining up state reimbursement and all the things, regulatory issues that we're going to have to go through. There's no capital expenditures in the first year of the project. So construction would start in your project year two, and this is where the capital requirements are coming from. So we look at the K&amp;B renovation schedule, and here's the spread of the K&amp;B estimate per crack, the site improvements that would have to occur, that are beyond what crack already included in their proposal, and the septic system. Because in this case, K&amp;B did not include the septic system in their proposal while SLAM did. So we had to go through a little quick take on each one to make sure everybody was, all the elements were covered, based on the various pieces. So this is your capital requirements totaled up, and then down at the bottom are your cost reductions. And again, we're only focusing on the salaries, and the facilities and operating costs. We only took places where we looked for cost savings. This area is grayed out, and I know this was a point of discussion, what I, so I wanted to gray this out to leave no doubt that you can't take cost savings before your trigger is triggered. And in this particular case, the cost savings is triggered by when you take occupancy of the new building. So in this year, you're moving in, in September of 17, and then your cost savings start in that same fiscal year. The capital expenditures do have a tail, so the following year after you move in, there's still follow-on expenses, punch list items, certifications that have to go on. Again, this is all per the correct guidelines. This is how the capital plan was built, and if you do, if you follow this along, this is just expenses out, less, less savings, gives you your net capital or your net cash Questions?
Well, first off, it's just important to emphasize again, that we're only talking about years out, we're not talking about actual budget years, but occupancy rates are when the project starts, so that we're not confused about, say, looking at cost savings in a particular budget year, we're not there yet, it's when everything starts. And the other part is, and I think we're going to get to that, is that what looks like a fairly okay cash flow in the fifth year of the project year, you know, where's debt service?
It's in the financial plan.
Why don't you let it get there, Valerie?
Again, so the capital planning is just about, just cash flow, money in, money out, and you're just looking to see the net between the two numbers. So I'll talk a little bit more about what we do with this once we get there. On the financial planning side, this is project year one, followed by project year two. I know this is a bit of an eye chart, but it's tough to get just in the form of a slide. As you can see here, we have, the first line is the budget net savings. So this would be the baseline budget of 2012, and again, these are all escalated dollars. Less the cost savings, they came off the previous one, so if you went back, you would look at this number, which is your cost savings. That number then would be added against the budget, which gives you this, this line item right here. And here's the total of your financing, Valerie. And this is your financing line. So you need to fund this particular option, you need, this is net cost now, these are net costs to the region. So we're assuming that the statements that SLAM and K&amp;B sent regarding what the state would reimburse at standard rates, we didn't, we didn't challenge that in any way, we took that at face value.
Right.
So this is a net cost to the district, which is what we want, because that's what we're going to go bond to. So the bonding here would be 70 mil, almost 75 million dollars to support this particular option. And Webster had suggested to do this in two tranches. So we're looking at bond number one would be $40 million, bond number two would be $30.5 million to get you to your, to your total. And the way the bond was working is, this particular one is a 25-year bond, doing an interest-only period, it's 1 percent, interest variance 3 percent. And you can see here how the scheduling goes, is you get... And you can see here how the scheduling goes, is you get access to the first, the first interest-only loan in year two of the project, ten million. The following year, you take a draw of thirty million, and then in, I think this is the fifth year, the bond goes into permanency. Once the bond goes into permanency, then your interest and principal start where you normally see it. And then this continues off through the bond's life. The second bond follows the same, the same flow, where we get access to the money in year five, it goes into permanency the following year, and again, you've got your interest-only, your principal payments, and this is all per Webster. So all we did was just take their schedules and transfer them into the bond, and then this continues out until the bond is satisfied. So this is your, your budgeting cost is up here, and this is the cost to the region and what you would go out, out to referendum for every year if this were to hold true. Each percentage is right here. I thought I'd lay in the delta from the current budget. So simply, if you looked at where there's zeros, this is your current budget with just inflation, because we haven't done anything yet to incur any savings or any costs. So it's your current year escalate. If we were doing things in current year dollars without taking the escalation into account, this number would be held flat at the twenty-one, three, five, five that you used to see until something happens.
All right, Anthony, on these last two slides, you're not showing us all the data. All you're showing us is the methodology.
Correct.
You've sampled a certain number of years, and you've taken this analysis out.
This goes out, well, the bond, yeah, so the bond starts here. You've got a bond life of twenty-five years, it's going to start here, so this one's running out for thirty-one years.
It's going to be somewhere over there by the other side of the library.
Yeah, over here.
And if I could just understand then on debt service, I can't quite identify the year this starts, but basically, once we're full bore, it's about two-point-four and or, and/or increase of about two-point-eight million a year, which includes principal and interest on bond one, and then it's joined by bond two at one-point-two million, that then goes up to two-point-three. So in other words, in the last year we have, our debt service is basically going to be, give or take, five million a year.
Yeah, which is right there.
Okay.
Right?
Nice. Yeah. Just need to understand.
It should level out about that, the five million service.
Okay.
So back to the percentages, you're looking here where now you see, based on the savings, you can see an eleven percent dip in the annual budget, followed by ten, six, seven, and then when the principal starts to kick in, you can see this trend reversing and starting to go up at four percent, seven percent. Now, there's one thing that's absolutely clear, is that, that another step, and I'm going to cover this later, but, you know, this is the first iteration of this whole process. We've got an initial put on what we think we're going to need in bonding. We asked, or Bob asked Webster to be as aggressive as they could with the bonding to help with the upfront. But there has to be some level of smoothing, if you will, that has to, has to happen here because it's too choppy right now. So without trying to solve that problem first, my thought would be, let's start here, let's kind of narrow the field down to what's of interest, and then focus Webster on a bonding schedule that would result in something that's a little less of a roller coaster. And I also think that that's a conversation that the three town finance managers are going to want to be involved in as well. At least one of them, actually two, has expressed a real interest in that conversation. Because I do think it's, it's, they're not mutually exclusive, right? They sort of go hand in hand with each other.
I just have a question, if anyone, of your costs.
Susan, just speak, let's have a people.
On the capital planning methodology page, under the costs, did, was there any consideration for additional busing? Because we had talked about.
That's a good question.
Additional busing being necessary for option two A.
Right.
So I didn't know if that eight-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand included any additional busing.
It does not, but let me explain that. When we took the baseline budget and we escalated, so if you imagine, if you've seen the budget in all the discrete line items, there are a number of them. Each one of those line items had a, an inflation factor pegged to that particular spend, right? So that's where we got the three-point-two percent, three-point-two-six percent, that's where that came from. So for example, I think medical insurance is one of the big ones that was in, had a very, a much bigger number than, let's say, the cost of paper as a, as a result. We looked at busing and, or the transportation cost, and that actually was held flat. So when you think about holding that number flat over the next thirty years with demographics that are going this way, it's actually a net increase in the actual, in the cost, in the available budget to spend on trans, to transportation on a per student basis. Does that make sense?
If you have fewer students and you're spending the same, then wouldn't the per student cost be increased?
Yeah, or you have more money to spend, the assumption there, the implication there, if you have more money to spend to service less students with the busing. So if you felt in one of your options that you actually needed more budget, it's already reflected in there, probably more than you really need. You know, if you really want to, you know, you, you get to the point where you're looking at each one of these line items, and you didn't look at each one line item and say, how hard can we press on this, or what are we going to do with medical insurance over the next thirty years? You could, you could be here forever trying to assume you went through that. So we just decided that to deal with the transportation issue, if we just held that flat, it should be more than adequate to cover any of the buses that we need. All right, there's a real argument to be made that that should actually be going down at a pretty steady clip, you know, given, given that, you know, the curve of the student requirement. You should have more than enough money to cover that.
I know there was some discussion because it had to do with the length of time students were on a bus.
Right.
Because we're drawing from such a larger geographic area for it to get here, I thought we were talking about the need to add more buses, not even to maintain status quo, but there will be a need, but the number of buses was not necessarily known.
I think the incremental cost of a bus was, Michelle, was it a hundred or fifty?
Fifty.
Fifty.
Forty-eight and change.
Right, so for every incremental bus, it's fifty thousand. I can assure you that holding that wide flash, you probably have a factor of, you know, of probably more than two X, maybe more like A X of what you're going to do, is what you were thinking of. But you could certainly take a look at it again, with the discrete budget.
Yeah, I just had a question because I wanted to know if that was.
But it's covered off. Valerie?
You brought up the smoothing of the debt service, and I know you're going to get into that, and that the intersection of cost savings and bond payments are acutely important, obviously.
Yep.
But tell me, why isn't Webster saying, project finished, construction loan, you pull down the construction loan, you do a period of interest only, and then you're set for your twenty or twenty-five years payment? Why you talk, why is there an issue of this smoothing that has to have this leveling? Is there a problem with that?
Yeah, I think what you'll see in one of the graphs in the appendix where your, your actual budget, the projected budget in the early years actually dips down, where you're seeing that, I think the one example you said, we have seen eleven or ten percent decline, and then not too many years out, you start to see a seven percent increase. Well, the way I understand it is the region can't reserve.
Right.
So you can't put that money aside and use it to do your own smoothing. So somehow, you know, the bank has to come up with a schedule that sort of, maybe, maybe we don't need to be as aggressive with the interest only and start drawing principal earlier to do that. So I think there's some of those actions, but the bank has control over it. And one of the towns in a discussion said there might be some things that towns could do to help smooth it out, because I, I understood it right, I think that more leeway than building up reserves to, to smooth things out.
Okay, so it's not really about Webster or where, whoever buys our bonds. It's really about the fact that we have some cost savings and a dip in our budget, and we can't bank that money to cover future debt needs.
Right. The instructions, the instructions to Webster out of the box was, give us, give us the most aggressive bonding you can give us. And that's what they did. And I would say my, my read of that is perhaps to move to aggressive in the early years. But, you know, that's part of the iteration.
Anthony, I'm sorry, you're going to have to keep your voice up.
Yep.
Please.
All right, so get into the results of all this work. So the capital planning piece answers the question of which is the best economic investment? And so when we look at the options, we look at the capital required, and in this column here with the colors, you're looking at whether it's a savings or a cost. And this is where you heard the term being used, net present value calculation, that's what determines this number right here. It's looking at your cash flows over thirty years, thirty-plus, whatever, or whatever it happens to be. You're taking all that money, which is now future money, and you're pulling your whole back into today's dollars. So you've got an apples-to-apples comparison, project A versus project B versus project C. You know, so when you bring those, those cash flows, and that's why we did, you know, cash in, cash out over thirty years, you bring that all back, and the way we did that is we just basically set the interest rate in that calculation equal, equal to inflation. All it is doing is saying that we want, we want to look at this and sort of take inflation out of the, out of the, out of the equation. We don't want inflation unduly influencing the economic evaluation of the option. And that's what, that's what's been done to it. So the way you would look at this and say that the capital required for option one is twenty-seven million, when you look at negative twenty-three, almost twenty-four million, that's saying that you're only recovering in current year dollars, you're only recovering about four million dollars of that in savings, you never break even. So it's just basically a net increase over the existing budget. And that's why it's coded in red. If you look at, I'll go to the other extreme, if you look at the tuitioning out option number four, it only requires a six-million-dollar investment, and that investment is to take this building down since you're tuitioning out the district. Over the thirty-year period, that's a, that's a, in today's dollars, that represents a seventy-one, near seventy-one million dollar savings to the district over the thirty-year period. And that's great. So you look at each one of these, and it gives you the ability to then rack and stack your options to answer the first question, which, if I have a limited amount of money to spend, where's the best place where I want to spend it? These are the same decisions that you go through every day, and you're looking at investment decisions, looking to buy a house, a car. You've got a limited amount of money and you've got choices, and somehow you need to figure out how to make that choice. That's what this exercise is telling us. So some of these options, even though they're positive, like this one is slightly negative, but it does get a payback. And, and, but it's out in year twenty-five. So the conclusions from this are options one, three, and six are economic losses. So if you're putting money in, you're not getting any real, you're not getting any return out of that money towards the district. There's no cost savings to be had out of it. There may be other benefits, but this is just economics. Option four is clearly the superior economic option, and if there were nothing else to be considered in this decision, this is, this is the, the only one that would warrant further discussion, again, if you were just looking at pure economics, but this is not a pure economics decision. There's other things that are going into it. You look at options two B and two C, I'd say they're economically practical, which means they, they are returning, they're a positive return on the investment, you're saving money net-net over the thirty years. And option two A is a push. You know, when, looking at cash flows over this projection with inflationism, there's enough assumptions here where it's, it's marginal. Valerie?
Why would two A be separated out as marginal? I mean, basically, it's just, as I'm reading two A, living within the walls with, with big fixes. I mean, sixty-nine million dollars, seven million dollars worth of fix. I mean, why is that separated out?
Two A?
Two A.
Two A is renovation of core and building two new wings on this building.
Right. It's going to be options. I don't.
It's separated out because it's, it's the, the, the net present value of that, of those cash flows is slightly negative, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. And at this point, I'd say that's a push, and it's really debatable as to whether it's slightly negative or slightly positive in the end, but you're putting seventy million dollars in and you're seeing no economic return on that money.
And that's over the twenty-five years.
Close to thirty, a little closer to thirty. But yeah. So Susan, if you think about this, just look at the opposite side of this coin. The opposite side of this coin says, if I invest just six million, I get seventy back. That's, that's what this is, that's what this is looking at. So just from a fiduciary responsibility, you know, where you want to hone in on, that's all it's telling you. So anything you see in red is basically money in that you'll never see back. Anything that's in green is money in, and you're getting some back. The bigger the number, the more you're getting back on your initial investment.
Well, of course, the assumption being that the numbers given originally to us by Castle Blues and KMB and SLAM can't be modified. You're just taking their whole numbers from their first presentation, and I understand that.
Correct. But hold that thought.
It was from their second presentation. They didn't modify.
Yes, we, we took their, we took their numbers at face value. We didn't get into, or I should say, Don and the other people looking at it, weren't getting into a negotiation with anybody right now, or any value in the nearing exercise. It just said, okay, this is what they're giving us, let's just plug in it. And this, again, I strongly suggest this is an iteration, and it's a starting point one, but it gives you the first reference point in which to go forward. All right. Other questions about this at the front?
Can I ask a question? No.
The first select, and go ahead.
No, I can wait. I can wait till later.
There's not going to be any public questions. Go ahead.
Oh, no, I just want, where in this presentation will it show what the state gives back? That's already in there for construction?
Yes. All these, all these costs are all net to the state aid.
Is that why the two numbers are different between two A and two C?
No, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not going to open it up. I just don't have time.
Can I ask a question then?
Yes.
Is that why the numbers are different between two A and two C? Because we would not get some of that grant money? And I know that's not part of your information, I mean, you're just dealing on what was given to us, but I'm, I'm still trying to figure out why two A is marginal, but it's really, I think, just very, very close to, to C. Is it because of state grant money? Maybe someone can help you with that?
All right, I, if, Don, if you've got these proposals, probably committed to memory better than I do, but I believe that the renovation portion, and, you know, because you have to demolish the two wings, and you've got to renovate this, is just more expensive than starting with Greenfield and going, and going from ground up.
Okay, so basically, it's the input from the, from SLAM and KMB that should be debated. Okay, thank you.
You know, we could take a look at the state reimbursement aid, but again, as, as a learning process through here, I think the state does not reimburse as generously on repairs.
I agree, yeah.
Than they do on new construction.
And that's the difference.
And that may have a factor in it as well.
I'm sure that's not it.
But each one of the, if you go to those resources, each one of those resources are detailed out, and you can see exactly what KMB and SLAM put in, and their assumptions for state reimbursement for every one of these options.
Right. And that's where our discussion will probably lead after.
Eventually, I'm sure it will. Michelle?
In the capital required column, you've netted out the state reimbursement already. So when looking at two A versus two C, there's about a two-million-dollar difference?
Right.
So is that, is that six million dollars plus just the two million over the third, the twenty-three, twenty-five, twenty, thirty years, whatever it is? Is that why that two-million-dollar of capital required turns into six million? Is that the difference between the yellow and the green over time?
Over time, and it's a difference between the cost per square foot to maintain. Snack. Staffing should be somewhat consistent, but the new PK doesn't include the central office, and that was a three, three-point-three million dollar price tag to include the central offices. We didn't use that.
And it also doesn't include two C, there's no core, there's not the pool, there's not the...
Oh, no, it does.
It's a grand new building with everything, so, okay. So, that's the difference in the savings going out, not...
So, the next piece in the analysis was the financial planning piece, which then answers the question of those options that I just looked at that are attractive, in other words, the ones in green, which ones can I afford? And this becomes a question of looking at your budget projections. Because it's one thing to say, you know, look at cash flows and say, wow, that's very attractive, if I put in a little bit, I get a lot of it out, but if that costs, if you can't afford that, the cost to finance that investment, it's an exercise, utility, but it's an exercise. So, what we want to look at now is, well, can I afford this from a cash flow standpoint or from a budgeting standpoint? And that's what this is looking at. So, I broke this down across the thirty-plus years into groups of ten years, so you can get a feel for what the impact of the budgets may be. So, the pluses and the minuses with the percentage is against your base budget today. As I was saying earlier in the example, if you look at option one, you spend roughly was twenty-eight million dollars, and the budget goes up on average in the first ten years, three-point-seven percent, in the back, the next ten years, five percent, and in the back twenty years, two-point-six percent. And why it's two-point-six percent is because your bond is starting to retire, and that's why it's starting to draw down. But the overall, across the life of that project, you're looking at a net three-point-seven percent increase to the budget. So, you take your existing budget line and just move it up, and it stays there. If you look at, again, option four, you'd see a two-point-two percent, fifteen percent, et cetera, against the current baseline budget. So, that's basically pushing that line down, and it sits down there and stays there. Everything else in between, you can get a feel for how it breaks down. So, Valerie, this is what I was talking about with the smoothing. So, if you look at option two B, you know, you're down one-point-three percent, then you're up one percent on average, and then you're down three percent again, is what can you do to sort of get that to be, let's say, consistently down over the thirty-year period? Or if it's gonna go marginally up, you know, one percent's not terrible, but still, it begs the question, what can you do as you get closer in there? It doesn't really change in the end, you're still borrowing the same amount of money. You might trade principal payment or interest payment, but directionally, you're not gonna, I don't think you're really gonna change anything, it's just about smoothing out the ups and the downs. So, again, if we look at each one of these, option one and three would be considered not affordable, and by defining affordable is, is it an increase to the budget or is it a decrease to the budget? So, one and three would be not affordable. Option four would be most affordable. Two B and C are affordable, but they, again, they're gonna require a little bit of smoothing. And two A and two six are effectively budget neutral. One slightly positive, one slightly negative, but two in particular may require a little bit more work to get rid of that three-point-four in the middle of the years. So, it's still a little lumpy. Questions?
There seems to be a one-to-one relationship between your last slide, capital planning, and this slide, financial planning, with one exception, and that's option six. In your last slide, you had that down as an economic loss, and on this slide, you have it down as budget neutral. I was wondering if you could explain the discrepancy, why that doesn't seem to follow the pattern that is followed everywhere else on the options?
Good question. I asked myself the same question when I saw it come out. The, the, this has a lot to do with the bonding schedule itself that's laid in here, and also the cost savings. You know, you have to make a relatively same-sized investment to look back. So, you have twenty-seven, because this includes the repairs to the school, but doesn't touch the primary, Washington primary schools. So, the cost savings for this option, while on staffing, are positive, they're not as good as the previous option, or the one that you, another option that has the repair in it with the new school. So, that's some of what you're seeing, and that's why that is showing as negative, which is the cost savings are. But relative to the budget, you know, it's a relative issue against your existing budget. So, it's slightly negative, which is, it doesn't trans, the percentages are not gonna be that great for a one-point-six million dollar, you know, negative over thirty years. You know, so you kind of pick that number, you know, spread it out, and that's why it's not that dramatic. So, this answers the question of the fourth building. Any other questions?
On the capital planning, option four, commission out middle school preschool, minor repairs to the three elementary schools, worth six million dollars. We hear so much about how much it would cost to just repair and do, you know, to fix what is not quite as it needs to be.
Let me break that down for you.
Please.
The six million dollars of capital.
I'll just point out what number you're looking at.
See this side chart? Here's, we're shaking out. So, I'll just go with six million, five million is pared out of the school, and one-point-one is repair investment into the three primaries, based on this finding.
One million dollars to repair the three schools for the next twenty-five years?
That's, I think, as far as the district had information, that they didn't hire K&amp;B to do the same estimate they did on this school, the three primaries. So, rather than have this as a zero, you know, we went back and challenged, you know, I'll say the system, but specifically, we challenged Don to say, what is it about the three primaries that you know that we should be including in this, at least to get us? Because I don't think anybody thinks that over the next thirty years, the buildings will require nothing. I realize that they just went through a capital investment, so it isn't necessarily vigorous, but again, this is part of the iteration. If you really want to refine this line out, I suppose you could go back and have K&amp;B come back in here and do in-depth on each one of these buildings to really understand what that line looks like.
The twenty-seven million dollars in option one, just the repairs to current configuration, kind of stands out against the one million.
Oh, it does.
For the minor repairs, three elementary.
It does. But when you're starting with...
So, clearly, that contributes to the darkness of the evening.
Oh, yeah.
And why that option four looks so good, because that number seems a little...
To take seventy million down to some very small number, it'd require a big investment, right, in the three schools. So, again, I don't know if it would change the batting order of the options, you know? How attractive it makes it, I don't know, but I might sense it. And the other thing I'll point out, go back to the assumptions page on this particular option that you're looking at. We looked at the gross cost pushed through of the neighboring school districts. By the way, when I say we, I mean Bob. He went out and looked at the neighboring school districts. We've just been working together, so it's a we thing. He went out to the neighboring school districts, looked at their current costs, and we decided to put it in at gross. And one of the reasons why we decided to do that is because we didn't know enough about their demographics, and whether or not, they may be low today, but they may be in five years headed for a step function change in their costs, because they're hitting the same brick wall, no pun intended, that we're hitting, with facilities, infrastructure becoming restrictive in what you do to manage the costs. So, rather than getting into all of that subjective conjecture, we said, let's just use the gross number, and it'll be good enough for where we are in this process. If you use the net number, you've doubled seventy million. That would go to probably one-twenty. So, it's gonna give you an idea. So, in option one, the twenty-three million is what K&amp;B gave us. You put in one-point-one and change to the septic system, site improvement to another one-point-two, and then there's a one-point-one, seven-four again for the elementary schools, which shows up. So, every option that we had repair on it, or some level of repair, like for the elementary, that number was pulled in equally. I think I would agree with you that over thirty years, that number was understated, not overstated. Any other questions? Okay. Now, we've looked at what's the best economic investment, and which ones could be, are become affordable. We can start to narrow the list down, well, that's the idea, but before you can do this, Valerie, you mentioned something before. So, what I built was a sensitivity analysis tool that we could use as this process continues. So, the way you would exercise this is you really want to understand volatility around the major variables. And the two major variables, in my opinion, here are interest rates and what the projects cost. Everything else, the cost per square footage isn't really, you know, it can be dramatically off in one direction or another, it's not really gonna move this needle. But if the interest rates move, or your project costs move, it will move a little. So, the way you would use this is, as I said, if, for instance, interest rates were to go up by two points, I would change that three to a five, and you would see how that would influence your affordability column, what that does to your annual budgets, because obviously, your bonding costs are gonna go up, and everything's gonna move with it. If you, if you hold the interest flat, let's say, let's look at the project costs and say, what if we value engineered any one of these proposals, and we're able to trim five percent out of it? We can, you could put in ninety-five percent in any one of these boxes, and you would see how it ripples through these matrices. On the other side, you could look at what if their contingencies were understanding, you're afraid these are sporting numbers, and you want to pad them a little bit. Again, you can change that to one-hundred-and-ten, and you can see how much of an increase, for example, makes a given option unaffordable, and how much of an increase in the project cost versus change in interest rates would make an option unattractive. And it could be a useful tool as you go through your process here to understand, you know, timing. Do we pull this trigger today and commit to a new school, or do we, you know, do we want to delay it for another year? All these things have costs, and that's a quick and dirty way of exercising this whole model, to understand how quickly these things change. So, if we go back to where we started, this is the major school we put up, these are the qualitative scoring at the team's game, and now we get the economic row, and we broke it up into two pieces. We looked at the budget projections and your retour, or I should say differently, the financial planning and the capital planning. And simply, the green is best fit, the red is worst fit. So, if you look, so I just highlighted these to give you a visual, that on the qualitative side, option two B was the strongest rating, and that's the new PK to five, with the repair of the high school, middle school high school. And of course, option four came in at the bottom of the pack as being a low score from a qualitative standpoint. If you follow the economic winds, your best fit was option four at an overall budget decrease of eleven percent over the next thirty years. Worst fit was option one, which is just invest money in the building, or buildings. And in terms of what's the best return on your investment, option four, again, was on top, and worst fit was option three, which is to renovate the core, which would keep you burning as it sits. Questions? So, at this point, can you suggest the next steps? Again, with the information provided, if you could narrow the field to the top two or three, and start to call the crowd out, then we can go back, perhaps, and exercise a sensitivity analysis, to the extent that you want to understand how quickly things may change on you. And then, we would go back to Webster, to ask him for refined bonding schedules, now that we understand what we're interested in, and then hopefully, to finalize the economic analysis at this point, as you go through. And I think, as I said in the beginning of the meeting, if you have further questions after tonight, I recommend that you send in the writing to Dr. Pat, and we'll consolidate them, and then get back written responses to the full board, so everybody's got benefit of everybody else's questions, and also to save us a little work if we're not answering the same question twice.
I think, Anthony, it's my understanding that you plan to be here next Monday?
Yes.
If you, if you're here... If people have questions, if they could get them to Dr. Cosentino in writing by email, for example, by Thursday, I should give her time, and Anthony, to collate them and try to have answers for us next Monday if there are questions.
Thank you.
Susan?
Thank you, I appreciate your indulgence. On page seventeen, on the capital requirements, now, my understanding was the septic has to be done, it does need to be done regardless.
Yeah.
Yet, the totals that you use in calculating, including the numbers here, are very different, with options one and six being a one-point-one million, and it goes down to five-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand for two C, five-hundred-and-seventy-nine for two B. I see different numbers here, and I'm not quite clear what the difference would have been.
Two things. One, everything here, again, is in future year dollars, right? So, if the septic system is gonna cost X today, you gotta count down that by, I think, we just four percent of the structural costs, which is what we pulled out of SLAM's proposal, where the escalator goes out. So, different options, we get the, it makes, we get the way in a septic system, you know, one option versus pulling it forward in another option, because, for example, if we're building new building, we've got to, the septic system has to follow the schedule of the new building. And if we're just renovating, we get to do the septic system whenever we think we're going to need to. So, in option one, the reason why it's in year five is because that's what Don and the consultant that evaluated the septic system thinks, that's about how long you're gonna have before you have to face that expense.
So, the lower cost in two B...
And then, and the second issue is, SLAM included basically fifty percent of the septic system in their proposal, where K&amp;B included nothing in their proposal. So, I had to add back to K&amp;B to get, or SLAM rather, to get it, you know? So, that's why you see a half a million in one, because, I'll point to, so you see this one here? In this line item, you have a half a million dollars of the septic that SLAM put into that number. I had to true it up and add the balance of it in. So, between that, and then the effect of the timing, of what year the money was taking place in, just explains the difference.
Your laser was at the twenty-two million, so the capital investment, is that what you meant, the same thing you were saying, that included half of the cost of the septic?
Roughly, yeah, I think it was five hundred.
And then you added the five-seventy-nine to make up the difference?
Don, what did they have, five hundred SLAM put in here?
Yeah, I had five hundred.
So, they put five hundred, so I just took the difference between that and how to add it back manually, that's all. So, what we see, for example, one included some demolition work and some abatement, while the other guy included demolition but didn't include abatement. So... So Don and I went through each one of those to make sure that when we came out of this, all the same work is getting done. So we pulled from one, added to another, and that's the difference in the number.
I'm just extraordinarily impressed. I've been through 20, 30 years of different people making presentations. I'm not an economics major, but I do understand it a little bit. And the fact that it's free, I can't range it out.
Who said free?
Thank you, this is just...
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Anyone else? Anthony, thank you. He's really going to come back Monday, he said.
One note, Valerie, this is, this is what I mean by smoothing.
Yep.
Your black void, this is, by the way, this is the first 10 years, so your black void is your current budget. And you can see how you've got spikes due to the, you know, it's just, it's just a cash flow issue. You don't, as you pointed out, your expenditures and your savings are sort of mismatched, which is why you've got this choppiness.
Because the way we're set up by the state, we can't retain money, so we have to keep our budget.
Part of it is out of control, part of it, I think, can be controlled, and that's going to be some of the magic that Don and Bob will create once, I'm sure, you zoom in on an option, to smooth that out, because you can never go, something like that, I don't believe.
Right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Anthony. All right. Dr. Cosentino, item four, possible update in Kenner and Thaddeus.
I just, I received an email, I spoke to Chris today.
Chris who?
Chris Perrin, who is the gentleman that was here, I think, two weeks ago. And he said, I asked him to send me an email, I'll just give you a little background. He has said that it's true, in Connecticut, every school currently has its, an elementary school.
Every town.
Every town, I'm sorry. But that there are two towns, and I think you know this from Jonathan, Norfolk and Colebrook, that are working on a plan to consolidate and close one of theirs, so they may be the first town. He says that Vermont and Maine are two states that he feels maybe he can find some information that may be pertinent to our information. He says, he talked to me about two towns, Wendell and Stratton, that would make a good case study possibly. Housing prices in these towns are significantly higher than the state median. Stratton does not have an elementary school. The neighboring town of Wilhug used to have one, but closed it. And they opened up a private independent school, offering guaranteed admission to students living in the towns of Stratton and Windhall, and he thought that maybe he could do a study of those home prices to see if there was an impact. He said that what he's finding right now is that the quality of schools is really the driving factor, and that in Vermont, which was interesting, or I think it was in Maine, that there are a lot of towns that do not have schools, but if you have a school, your students or your children must go to that school in the town. So he said, an interesting phenomenon is that people buy houses in towns that don't have schools, so that they then have choice, because if your town does not have a school, you have the choice at any school. So he said it was interesting. I told him I'd share the information, and I would call him tomorrow and let him know if you want him to continue, or to tell him, no, thank you, he can be here next week if you, to give us a further update, if you want him to continue or not.
Valerie?
Is the demographics, I mean, do we know if the demographics of these towns that he thinks he should study are similar to us, i.e. the aging population, the New York country house, vacation home population, things like that? Or are they just such rural, in a blim, nowhere in Maine, that no one's living?
Well, I, I don't, you know, what he's saying here is that the ones he's studying right now is Windhall and Stratton. I didn't get into all of that. He felt that that was a, the best towns that he could study at this point, from all that he's done. I think he's having a difficult time, as we knew he would, but I think he's saying that that offers some information. I can't speak to the demographics that way, I'm sorry.
Did we say that he would be available next Monday?
Yes.
Why don't we have him here, he can answer some questions.
I don't know that this is targeting the information that we need, because to say that Stratton does not have an elementary school, does that mean that Stratton does not have a school? The concern, that what we were looking for is what happens to a town that does not have a school and the real estate values in the town that does not have a school.
I think there are many towns, he said, that do not have schools.
Okay, so when I, when I read the elementary school, I had a question, then Windhall does not have a public school, but they have a private school, and that is still a different flavor.
Why don't we have the gentleman here, if the basket's agenda doesn't know the answers, have him here, he can ask you any questions, all the questions you want.
Was he asking to start the study this week? So he has something to present?
He's already done some work for us, okay? He's, I can say to him, I, we, at this point, we'd like you to come next week, don't do any work, more work or significant work, I'll tell all the kinds of things you're asking until next Monday.
And if, hold on, if people have questions, like questions tonight, forward them to Pat, he can forward them, so try to be prepared to answer them.
I just wouldn't want him to spend his time studying something that's not relevant to our current circumstance.
It's already been voted to be done, and so, you know, if we stop him next week, that's fine, but as of right now, it's been voted to be done, he should go forward. If you want to tell him to stop this week, that's fine, but I would suggest having the man here. If you have questions, get him to Pat this week, he can forward him on, so he's prepared, and we'll make a decision next week as to whether we want to go forward with it.
Well, with all due respect, we, we put forward a request to look at real estate values for towns that no longer have a school. So all I'm asking is, if these towns indeed have schools, then that is not going to give us the answers that, to the question that we are needing, so let's not waste the money.
I don't know the answer to that question. Why don't we have him here and answer it? Forward the question to him this week, so he can be prepared to answer that, and you may be right, I don't know. Valerie?
I'm unable to attend next week's meeting. My question is really for Dr. Cosentino, in any case. The town of Windhall, Vermont, used to have a public elementary school, they closed their elementary school and opened a private independent school on its place. To your knowledge, would a town be allowed to do that under Connecticut state laws?
We'd have to re-formar this.
Well, they think it was voted, they think that the towns approved it. Would the state allow that? My question is to Dr. Cosentino, would the state allow that?
I could actually answer that question. There are, there are two districts in the state of Connecticut that do that. I think one is in eastern Connecticut, and one is northeast of Florida.
Gilbert School.
The Gilbert School in Woodstead is a private school.
Right.
But they have a relationship with the, the public.
Right.
To have those students go there. I can't remember the name of the one in eastern Connecticut, but...
Norwich Free Academy.
Norwich Free Academy, thank you.
Sure.
My understanding, though, is that those towns in Connecticut, that they have a relationship and they tuition in, this makes it sound like the town actually opened the school, and I don't know that those towns did that, they just chose to tuition into an existing. Like, I don't know if we could do that.
I think that those, both of those schools have been there for some time.
Yeah.
And I think they were opened originally as private schools, but they saw this as a way to increase their revenue too.
Right, so I think they tuition in, this sounds like, well, I don't know.
The town may not have done it, though. It may have actually been done by a private foundation or something else, but you have to really get to the weeds to figure that out.
Right.
Valerie?
Going forward from this, I have a bigger concern and question. I personally think we have a lot of information that has to be digested, and we should take the time thoughtfully to go through all of this and debate each and every option thoroughly. And indeed, we're going to have to get more information. I personally am concerned about those whole numbers from SLAM, I'm sorry, from Castle Booze, they're huge, they're mammoth, they're scary, and a lot comes out of using those high numbers for whatever option of renovation plan we have, I'm sorry, build to new. Why do we have to rush the process? I would like to dedicate the summer to this, if we're not going to have a question to the public until the fall. I see no reason why we have to rush this before the new board sits. There are not a lot of new members here, there's not a big turnover, and I think whomever is coming in, we have people who have been part of the, the study groups, people who have served on the board before, it's not like we have to bring to speed a lot of new faces. I, I would love not to be hurried in this. I don't want to vote in July, before July, on this.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Is there a motion for executive session to discuss the...
We have public comment.
No, we don't.
We don't?
This is a special meeting, there's no public comment.
It's on the agenda.
Yes, it is.
It is.
I think you should have public comment. Just say...
It's not on the one I have, is it?
This is what I've got, this is published, it's only...
Okay. Well, if there's an agenda, then I'll open the talk for public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to address this? Yes, ma'am. Would you, would you come up, because you need to be on camera, just state what you're from.
Over here.
Right over here. These young men can get you on camera. Just state what your name and what town you're from.
Martha Cava from Roxbury. Actually, going through the presentation, I agree with Valerie. I think not only because of what's affecting our region, but in the wider region, you have Nanawog looking at a huge investment, also facing funding, attendance, you have New Milford having the same issues, although they're not ready to spend any money. I'm, there's some people in Brookfield, they're starting to complain about their physical plan and their declining enrollment. Region six in Litchfield are opening negotiations. I think this is a real opportunity to change the face of Connecticut in a productive way for this region and the state as a whole. And maybe it would be nice if we could take a leadership position in that, and I think to do that, we need to look at things. Maybe that tuition option's not so bad if it means re-regionalizing, maybe that would be greater cost savings, who knows? So I agree, there's a lot going on right now, there's a lot of dynamism in the broader area that could be used to advantage. So I agree with Valerie.
Thank you.
I'd like anyone that agrees with me. It's kind of a flashback, not being here for so long.
Yes, sir.
Captain Creek from Devine?
Would you please?
Sure.
I'm sorry, state your name and where you're from.
Captain Creek from Devine, Little Bridge Water. And my most concern, I read about the company Karen Fazio, and I was trying to do all the research on it, and I don't know why they were chosen, but from what I have to tell, basically, a commercial-based appraisal firm does, does musical devaluations also, but also commercial-based. And we tasked them with finding out about residential values, so I'm a little concerned about that, and also, all their work seems to be down county, in New Haven and Fairfield, so I don't know what kind of, what they know about Messeville County, very different, so I don't know, maybe I could answer some of those, if they can address some of those issues about how, what they, how they're looking at doing the study. I mean, Maine is completely different in geographic than...
Maybe that'd be a good question for the gentleman when he comes next week. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you. Is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss the superintendent's comments?
So moved.
Second? Moved by Valerie, second by Greg Aldison. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed?
Yes.
Any abstain? We don't want an executive session.